Now I know you read the title, wait a minute, Grand Rapids City Council Meeting, who cares? I don't live in Grand Rapids and I know how those city council meetings go. They're so dull and boring, but oh, you would be so sadly mistaken because what we have here is a parade of the woke getting up to that microphone and using all of those elite intellectual strategies that they developed in all of their college careers are going to slay these city council members with their logic and reasoning, right? Yeah, 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 right. Hello out there. I am trying to get through.
With his powerful brainwaves cradled in the warmth of reasoning, it's time for Johnny Walker Dread to straighten you out on a thing or two. Emanating all the way from exciting Las Vegas, Oklahoma, it's the Johnny Walker Dread Show.
And it won't take long for the hilarity to start. Now, what's this all about? Patrick Leoya, he was a refugee from the Congo. He came to the United States ostensibly to escape the violence, but he seems to have brought a lot of it with him and he got shot by a police officer named Christopher Scher. And these wokesters, for lack of a better word, are going to get up to the microphone and try their best to get through to the city council meeting that they're not being heard. All right, take your way and it doesn't take long.
That will take us to our last opportunity for public comment tonight. Again, we ask that you come forward, that you share your name, the city that you live in, and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is John Williamson.
Hello, John Williamson.
I've lived in Grand Rapids for 19 years. I went to Calvin College where I studied communications. I have a master's degree in counselor education.
He went to a college to study communications. Well, he must be a great communicator. And he's got like degrees and stuff.
... from Western Michigan University. I'm trained in nonviolent communication. I am a passionate pacifist.
Is he applying for a job here? Why the resume? I don't know. Get, but get ready. He seems like a reasonable guy. He, he's like a kindly person who's gonna go up there and talk about property taxes and why he needs to have his taxes lowered, right? Oh, no, it's not going to be like that at all.
Under no circumstances would I raise a gun to shoot another man. Under no circumstances would I wrestle a man to the ground and tase him.
Well, I'm glad I can't depend on you to save my life if I'm under attack.
I don't understand. Best I can tell, Rosalyn Bliss would have pulled the trigger herself. Best I can tell, Rosalyn Bliss loves having the blood of Patrick Leoya on her hands.
Oh, here we go. Heck, I say it's going to get even worse. Oh, you said it was going to be boring, huh?
Mayor Bliss, best I can tell, you don't know who Emmett Till is, you don't know who George Floyd is, you don't know who Breonna Taylor is. I don't see you marching with his name because we march every day for Patrick Leoya and I don't see y'all. So seems to me y'all are marching in the name of Christopher Scher, Christopher Scher, all of y'all with his blood on his hands. Far as I can tell, you would have pulled the trigger yourself because his plate wasn't right. Far as I can tell, you stand opposed to Dr. King. Far as I can tell, you stand opposed to peace. This movement that marches in the name of Patrick Leoya or in the name of whichever man I have heard has been killed by the police today in Grand Rapids. I have heard today another killing of the police of a black man in Grand Rapids. I have heard, I pray it's not true, but I would not be the least bit surprised. I didn't want to say another name. That was to be the last name. Patrick Leoya was to be the last name I ever forgot.
Justice for Patrick.
Justice for Patrick. Would you please leave these people alone? These are your citizens. These are their voices. Why must you silence? Why must you tone police? You are silencing Dr. King's spirit. Every time you silence these people, you are silencing Dr. King, Rosalyn Bliss, and I will run for mayor against you and I will devastatingly destroy you if there is anything...
I love it. Hey, what can you say?
Like a city leftover after the anarchy you may unleash with the cruelty you continue to add to the most desperate in your community. I walk around downtown giving out water bottles. You know how much $80,000 a year could do to feed the people without homes in this city? I am so sick of these conversations with these ideas you get from rich white men about how we gonna fix the city, about how the market is gonna raise all ships. It is leaving more and more out of the cold. Homelessness has exploded under Mayor Rosalyn Bliss who only got elected because a guy named Bliss made a fucking water slide.
Sir, sir, stop.
Excuse me, why? What is it? I'm, I have 14 seconds, I'm missing. Oh, you can't say an F word. If you march with Dr. King's spirit, you can't say an F word to...
Oh, no, they're taking away the F word. Oh, no, that's like the AR-15 for the woke crowd. What are they gonna do now?
Rosalyn Bliss, who will never be elected again, who is silencing even now the voices most desperate be heard. You are marching even now against Patrick Leoya and I am ashamed of all of you.
Thank you.
Remember, he majored in communications.
All right, others wish to be heard?
I know why I didn't want to go next because you didn't want to follow the man. All right, Lucas, first ward, you know me, tired of introducing myself, but in case you somehow just got here.
When they start off with, you already know me, you know it's going to be good.
Last week during your special meeting, somebody really nailed it when they said a few of you are nice, none of you are brave. That's one of the most effective summaries I've heard concerning this body. I think that's my biggest gripe, even with the ones of you that I like. Just imagine how different things would be if you were brave enough to pass resolutions condemning police violence and pledging to make change.
Well, they can't. And the reason why is that this investigation is still underway and for the city council to pass such a resolution would be seen as an attempt to intervene in such an investigation. So the city council pretty much has to keep a hands-off deal. The investigation is outside the police department. It's being investigated by the state.
Imagine if Commissioner Lanier, after so much deafening, sold-out silence, had more to say than petty shots taken at the standing protesters in the room.
And by the way, I should mention that if this city council had come out and said instead that they supported the police officer, that would be far braver than going on and acquiescing to this crowd, but you think that he would actually...
Yeah, so let's talk about that police shooting then, yeah? Or that, that, the incident that was brought up tonight? The fact that a man was laying on the ground untreated for 15 minutes while GRPD police cruisers blocked an ambulance from getting through?
Yeah, that probably didn't happen. The street was probably blocked and they had to probably remove the blocks to let the ambulance through. I really seriously doubt that the police would put up a barricade to prevent the ambulance from getting to a wounded individual. This is how misinformation starts. You have some nut at a city council meeting just spewing off this bullshit, but okay.
Shall we talk about that? Shall we talk about the fact that protesters are still being silenced by the city? Let's talk about the fact that protesters were arrested on the way to this meeting so they are unable to speak to you all tonight.
Did they break any crimes that would allow them to be arrested? Gee, we don't seem to be mentioning anything about that.
I know that you don't want to hear what we have to say. I see all of your miserable faces. Well, guess what? You should be fucking miserable. Your fault.
There goes the microphone.
It is your fault that Patrick Leoya was murdered. And you are continuing to silence activists. I'm really proud of you, Bliss, for turning off my megaphone because you know who else you turn it off on? Not the white folks, it's the black folks. Want to go through those videos and see how many people you prevented from speaking, from swearing? It's the black folks, not the white folks. Patrick Leoya was murdered by GRPD. Do you see that look? Do you see how she feels? Do you think she gives a rat's ass? If you care about justice in this city, you would do something about it.
What can they do? It's not in their hands. What they can't understand is, is they think that because they hired the police that they can go in and do an investigation and start firing people. The investigation has been taken over by the state. The city council has to keep its paws off of the thing because, I don't know, maybe because the officer deserves like due process? Could that be it? The same thing that they advocate for teachers and everybody else?
Not build new fucking buildings.
Okay, your time's up. Your time's up.
Oh, her time's up, but that doesn't mean much.
Your time's up. No, I gave you a warning and your time is up. The rules are very clear. The rules are very clear.
Yeah, the rules are clear, but it's also clear, they don't care. Gee, why do so many of them get hurt? Maybe it's because they don't follow the rules.
The rule, your time is up. 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 I'm gonna ask you...
A battle of the wills here. Who will win?
You to leave or I will have somebody escort you out.
Oh, oh, it looks like the city council will win.
Your time is up. Your time is up.
What they need is one of those big, long like hooks that comes out and just grabs the people and pulls them off the side like they did back in vaudeville.
Time is up. Okay, we're gonna...
Have words to say and you are...
Your time's up.
I don't know what that dude says, but it's like a magic elixir. She just got right off the stage. What he did is he probably told him, hey, man, we have somebody coming up behind you that's even gonna throw out more F bombs and get even more hysterical than you. So come on, set aside.
Justice for Patrick Leoya.
All right, others who wish to be heard?
That's true. Hello fellow Michiganders. I'm a regular taxpayer and citizen. Our people want answers and accountability. We need answers, not just for the past, but for the present.
Well, the answers are gonna come from the investigation being done by the state. If that's what you're wanting, but I have a feeling those are not the answers you want.
What would change? What would change? The police department supposed to protect and serve, supposed to reinsure, supposed to make sure the community is safe.
Oh, the police department is supposed to protect and serve, huh? Gee, I wonder what the people in Vivaldi, Texas think about that statement?
What are they doing? How is they going about it? We have no answers. The community's lost. How do you, how do you get pulled over for looking suspicious? What is suspicious? Were you not living in our community?
What's suspicious? Oh, I don't know. A look that makes it look like you might be about ready to commit a crime. And by the way, man, if you're going to address the city council, look at them. It has more meaning when you look at the city council, when you're talking to them.
Were you not active in our community? So what do we do at that point? It should be something where it should be mandated, where they should do community service. I don't believe that they should get defunded, but it should be something to be done. Our community is upward right now.
They should be required to do community service? Are you gonna pay them? If you're not gonna pay them, nobody's gonna do the job. Nobody's gonna volunteer 10 hours a week to go out there and pick litter off of highways for free.
Like you don't want to see our back against the walls. We have no choice but to fight.
Oh, that sounds like a threat.
Not wanna fight, even the people who go to work every day. So what do we do? We ask y'all to what do we do? Have you seen somebody gunned down? Have you seen somebody on Zing or your doorbell get gunned down?
I have an idea. Here's something you can do when you get pulled over by the police and he asks you for your driver's license, might want to give it to him. If you don't have one, you might as well just go ahead and fess up. Sorry, officer, I don't have a driver's license. It was revoked. Sorry, I'm driving on a revoked license, whatever. Or how about this? I have nothing to say on the matter. Now they're gonna take you to jail because if you don't produce a license, that's an arrestable offense, but they're not gonna shoot you. Now, fight the cops and run from them and then when they grab a hold of you, resist arrest and then grab his taser, that might get you shot. So if you're asking, what do you do? I don't know, act like a normal, reasonable person. I mean, Patrick Leoya was not the first person to ever been pulled over in this country. I've been pulled over a few times myself, never been shot. It's not because I'm white, it's because I don't act like a jackass when I get pulled over. I'm not happy about it and I'm not always nice to the cop, but I'm not stupid enough to get into a fight with him.
Do kids want to grow up to be police officers now? Like come on now, everybody in this chair sitting in front of us, y'all put hard work in dedication. What if somebody killed y'all before y'all became who y'all was? Somebody gotta make a difference. Somebody gotta stand up. We got a new chief in town. Somebody gotta make a difference. So who, who gonna do it? We only got a voice. Y'all in a position and power to help out our community and that's all we asking.
Thank you. Thank you for your com-
Okay, that first dude, by the way, I give an F because after he went into his tirade, nobody was listening to him. That one girl that was on there before, I give her like about a C or a D because they had to turn off the microphone halfway through and guess what? I mean, you're not gonna be very effective. This was better. He didn't use any F bombs. He was reasonable, he didn't go berserk. He didn't say much. I mean, there's not much content there. Somebody has to step up and take charge and do something. When is that thing going to be done? Really vague and abstract. If you've got ideas for what the police should do, state them. So I'm gonna give this one a C.
All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Kieran, second ward. I wanted to speak earlier before y'all voted on the resolutions about the obsolete property rehabilitation districts. I don't appreciate that I wasn't able to speak on that because I wanted to point out that y'all are approving the maximum length of time for these exemption certificates, 12 years. So for 12 years, these property owners are not going to pay the full property taxes. How long does it take for them to develop a building and then charge us extra rent to live there while they get to cut their taxes? So I just want to say, you know...
I suppose the issue here is, is that people are putting in new buildings to rent and they're not having to pay property taxes until the buildings actually are constructed. That is an economic decision. It may be that by doing that, you encourage more people to build rental housing. This person, and I don't know if it's a he or a she, doesn't understand that and just thinks that, well, these are rich people and they're like being given a break and therefore that's bad. So they don't think in terms of economics. They don't, they don't understand economics at all, but whatever.
Screw you for that. Also, last week was really nice. We were all able to speak. Some of us dropped F bombs, but we just kept talking and there was no who blah, so we actually got through the whole line. Take note. Saying one swear word is not going to kill democracy or your proceedings here.
The thing about the F bomb, it's like their only weapon they have and when you take it away from them, they just crumble. Every one of them is going to be complaining, why can't I use the F bomb? Seriously, if you have vocabulary, use it.
It's how real people speak. Not all of us are educated and privileged enough to have a thousand different words.
Oh my God, we're so stupid. We don't have enough words. You can't take the F bomb from us. It's all we know.
That all mean the same thing. Sometimes what we have is a four-letter word that starts with F because we're angry and we're upset and we...
How about going to college and broadening your vocabulary? Did you think about that? Or how about just opening up a thesaurus? Or just thinking about it a little bit before you go up and make a fool of yourself? Think about ways you might be able to phrase your arguments so that one, they don't cut off the microphone and two, they're more persuasive. They show that you're an intelligent person and therefore more likely to have thought about these things more deeply. But if you want to get up there and make a fool out of yourself, go ahead.
Come back and we ask you for things and I wanted to ask you for something, but you didn't let me speak tonight. I just, it's so sad, like...
Well, keep in mind here, that was on some motion that carried earlier and you can almost bet that they did have an open forum for that at some other meeting. So I'm not buying this argument that you did not get a chance to say anything about it.
I know they say like they're gonna be fucking accessible. Oops, I'm sorry. That was on accident. Like I said, I talk like that in my daily work life.
Okay, they didn't cut you off. They realized, oops. It's all right. You didn't use it as a way to disrupt.
I'm a professional human being and I drop an F bomb every once in a while. It's just ingrained, okay?
What the hell? She called herself a professional human being. I guess that set somebody off.
Sir, please don't disrupt. Go ahead.
Yeah, it was, it was well done. But yeah, I just, I just want to say I do not appreciate the job you're doing, Rosalyn. I don't appreciate the way you run these meetings or listen to your, listen to your community. I don't appreciate the way that a bunch of black mothers were arrested today and their voices were silenced in this meeting.
Well, what did they do? Did they break any laws? If they broke the law, they should be arrested. You see, they never tell you that. They don't come out and say, look, these black mothers were arrested and they broke no laws.
I don't like the way we're being targeted for asking for what we deserve and what we want and just to be treated humanely. Justice for Patrick Leoya. Defund GRPD to the minimum 32%. We ask that Chris Becker be taken off of the Christopher Scher murder case. We ask that Christopher Scher be arrested.
It's not in the city council's purview to do that. They don't understand government. I mean, civics education is woefully lacking in this country.
We request that police have to get their own liability insurance and what's that other one? Hmm, abolish qualified immunity. So that's what I have to say today. Sorry, I said the F word. It happens all the time. Fuck you.
You see, they just can't help it. It's all they know. I give this one a D. Rambled on and on about stuff there with no actual input and at the end stated a whole bunch of demands with no justification, no supporting argument at all. And then you finish it with an F bomb with essentially a middle finger to the city council. So if there was anybody on that city council who was thinking, you know, this person here makes a little bit of sense, maybe I should listen a little bit more, that pretty well took that away.
All right, others who wish to be heard?
Defund GRPD.
Okay.
Hi, sorry, I had to sanitize. So my name's Jose. I am glad to be able to speak up here today. I wasn't able to come to the last meeting and then unfortunately, you know, you all recessed the meetings and then dipped out of here pretty quick. So thank you for your time today. So first thing, justice for Patrick Leoya. Second thing, I, so I actually used to be on the civilians appeals board years ago. I quickly got out of there because I realized that it was just for show. So in the first, in the first case that we had, you know, it was, it was a police officer going into a private residence chasing someone that had committed, I don't even know what it was, but...
Well, that might be important, but okay.
They went into a private residence that they shouldn't have gone into.
Well, I don't know. It depends on what that person did. You just got done saying you don't, you're not even sure.
And, and the thing that was asked was, was this, was this following policy? And the thing is, following policy isn't always the moral or ethical, ethically correct thing to do.
But it often is.
And I know Brandon Davis was talking about the, the reimagine, the, you know, civilian appeals board initiative. I think if we're gonna reimagine what CAB is, we need to, we need to let them be able to change policy because policy doesn't always equate to, to, to ethically or morally correct.
Gee, he wants to change policy now. If there was only a board out there, some governing body that you could go to and have the policies changed, let's see, oh, I know, the city council. That's how you change policy. And by the way, man, you're gonna go up and speak to the city council, the mayor, the city councilman and all those people. Comb your hair, dress a little nicer. What the hell?
I had a, I had a validation ticket, right? I don't even know what officer it was. I have to look back on, on my phone, but simply asking to get this validated got me threatened with, with arrest.
Yeah, who believes that story? Can I get this validated? You're under arrest. I mean, really? No, I have a feeling that something else happened there that he's not telling us.
Hi, my name's Alexis. I usually like to be a little prepared before I come up and do this kind of thing because...
Yeah, we usually want you to be prepared too. Unfortunately, we don't get what we want, do we?
Because honestly, I, when I get angry, I swear a lot and Mayor Bliss, you don't like that, which whatever. Honestly, I'm sure you say it at home, but...
But that's not the issue. I say it at home too. I don't yell it out at city council meetings. And if you can't understand the difference between saying the F bomb in the privacy of your own home and saying it at a city council meeting, I can't help you. And again, what is the deal with the F bomb? Oh my God, so they won't let you use the F bomb? By the way, I'm not sure they can do that, but whatever the case, let's suppose they can. It's not the end of the world. You can still convey your message without the F bomb. It's called vocabulary.
That is completely beside the point because I want to emphasize what a disappointment you are. When you were elected, I was a political science student at Grand Valley.
Oh, there's a real shock. She was a political science major at a community college and now she knows everything there is to know about everything.
I was thrilled to see a woman mayor because that was something that I felt that I could aspire to be. I would rather die than be what you are. Like honestly, I'm not even saying that as a joke.
Really? You're not saying that as a joke? You would literally rather die than do what she does for a living? Okay. Political science major.
You are disgusting that you can sit up here and look at me with so much condescension.
She uses the word condescension. You see, it can be done. You just have to crack open the thesaurus once in a while.
Is gross.
Oh, it's so gross and disgusting. Okay.
And that you can sit here and talk to these people and pretend that you, you are listening in any capacity is gross. You might as well not show up to these meetings because yeah, Joseph Jones did a better job than you. Probably any of these people could do a better job than you and everybody in this room. And I cannot even tell you that, like I honestly don't have words because...
And this whole thing of, well, these people behind me could do a better job than you. Well, then why are the people on the other side, city councilmen, and you are out scrounging through the garbage can for scraps? Well, it may be that those people in front of you, the city councilmen, have risen through the ranks and have gotten businesses and have actually been able to use communication skills to better themselves and the people behind you haven't been able to do those things. So it's on you.
Oh, man. All right. Justice for Patrick Leoya.
Whenever they can't think of anything to say, they, they just go like, oh, oh, man, justice for Patrick Leoya.
If you don't get justice for Patrick Leoya, honestly, I would expect your city to burn down because...
Okay, that's a threat. Sorry, at that point, the microphone should be shut off and I think that a police officer should have a talk with her. No, I don't think it's a threat that you can arrest her for, but I think that you can talk to her and say, hey, if you're gonna come back into city council meetings and talk like that, you're not coming back to the city council meetings and they can ban you from the city council chambers if you have shown a pattern of this kind of behavior.
I'm done with this. I'm done with you. I'm not gonna pretend...
Oh, we're, we're not gonna see you anymore? Yes.
That I care about your opinion? I'm not gonna pretend I care about any, anybody here's opinion. I think that you all should fuck off.
Okay, all right, others wish to be heard?
They can't help it. Their F bombiness is just built up in them. Their F-bombiness is just built up in them, and they just have to use it. They are so lacking in vocabulary that when you take away the word, it's like it's just itching to get out. Remember, this is our intellectual elite. This is the wokesters. Well, that's true. Some of them do, most don't.